Prove.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Vogel? Yep, Sir Chat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBrock?
Yes.
Next item is public comments. It's time and place for comments on any item other than those on a public hearing. Who wish to speak, please advise. Hearing done, seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Sir Chat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBrock?
Yes.
Vogel? Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item is new business under new business. Action item number one, time to post a regular meeting and open public hearing on an amended fiscal year seventeen eighteen year budget. Ask the clerk when the notice is published.
May fourth.
Any written comments for or against?
No sir.
Excellent. Like staff to provide a report. Mr. Manon?
This is, thank you Mayor. This is the last chance that we will have to amend our budget. The budget is being amended for additional water purchases. You will recall last summer, it was dry and extended summer into fall and the water purchases need to be amended eighty-five thousand dollars and that is the extent of the amendment, sir.
Anyone present who wish to be heard for or against a proposed amendment? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
To move. Second.
Roll call.
DeBrock?
Yes.
Vogel? Yeah. Sir Chat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty, amending fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Motion.
So moved.
Back up.
Roll call please.
Vogel? Yes. Sir Chat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBrock?
Motion carries. Item two, portion of outlot Y of twelve Oaks, plat two rezoning request. Time again to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on the proposed rezoning request for a portion of outlot Y of twelve Oaks, plat two. Ask the clerk when the notice is published.
May fourth.
Any written comments for or against?
No sir.
Ask staff provider report. Marlo, Gary, between the two of you, we got it up on the board here tonight.
I'm just going to do it real quick.
Excellent.
If I may. Point on the board. This is twelve Oaks, plat three. You have twelve Oaks Drive and Marina Cove Drive. And that's Anchorway Drive, my mistake. Marina Cove Drive will be here. In this area is R one A. This area here is R one being south of the R one A. Under R one, they would have eight lots. Under R one A, they are showing nine lots. This is up against a poor property which is up against highway four fifteen. This went in front of the P and Z at their meeting in April, in April and had approval to come, approved recommendation to come to city council.
Here. Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against? Anything to add, Mr. Gilati?
Sound good to me.
Comfortable in the back corner, I know.
So not a lot of discussion in P and Z, just going from the eight, nine lots. Just to clarify though, this is Marina Cove Drive, not we, we got rid of Anchorway because of the, of previous change. So Marina Cove extends to, right, so.
Yes, we're extending R one A, nine lots this way.
Yes.
Why, why the change? And another question is what happens at the end of that road? Is there going to be another cul-de-sac or?
My Marlo Gilati with twelve Oaks. We, we were able to add a lot. We work a lot there with Kyle Howt and Kyle said those first few lots that we could get, you know, it's, we keep the price down on a little bit because they're going to be a little bit small. They still have a lot of great depth, all of over ten thousand square foot at least. So it, it gave us an additional lot, but it also, we're going to be able to price the first, these first nine a little bit lower. They do butt up against the highway. So there's, there's, you know, it gives us an opportunity to be a little more affordable where, and when, and when we do our covenants, we'll probably adjust our covenants for that, this particular lot right here. Now, we've, we've submitted to Kathleen the construction drawings for the whole plat and the whole plat extends out. There'll be twenty-nine lots altogether. Twelve Oaks Drive comes in where Gary was talking about and then we have, it, it, it is a cul-de-sac at the end of this other street. I don't know if Kathy, you got anything, any pictures of that or not?
I, I didn't bring any with me, but that preliminary plat with the cul-de-sac was approved probably in two thousand thirteen or so.
Yeah.
So really just adding one more.
We're just completing what we've already planted. We're just going to add one more lot in here to try to hit a specific market.
And so if I understood you right, then there's going to be twenty more lots?
They'll wrap around the cul-de-sac and then come back on the other side. Those are all eighty, those will all be, yes.
Okay.
And the R one A is also, as we see in our packet, it's, so it's really an extension of what's already there.
Right, the other twenty are already approved.
It's not like to say change.
Right. And I think we had R one A coming in from, from Marina Cove. So we're kind of following through that and transitioning. And the last couple of those lighten out a little bit and then it'll transition into the, into the cul-de-sac. Pretty nice lot.
Pretty nice lot.
Well, I've said many times, I have no, no objections to sixty-five foot lots.
Seventy, the, the narrowest one is just a little over seventy feet.
Yeah, I've, I've lived on a sixty-five foot lot for almost fifty years and it hasn't stunned my brain, so.
So did mom and dad.
Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
DeBrock?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes. Sir Chat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen seven hundred.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
DeBrock?
Yes.
Vogel? Yeah. Sir Chat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, Mr. Michael McCoy, executive director, Metro Waste Authority. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Council Mayor. Appreciate the time tonight. With me is Leslie Earlbeck. Public Affairs Director, always Metro Waste and many other hats as well. But tonight, just I'll be very brief on giving you an update of, of who Metro Waste Authority is and where we're at today and where we're headed here in the future. So we, you know, we like to continue to see ourselves as that, that innovator and that facilitator. Metro Waste has played that role in, in past years. We've, we were formed forty-nine years ago to manage a landfill for Polk County. It evolved into the leader of environmental stewardship and cost-effective waste management. Down at Metro Park East is the landfill here that you see up in the upper left-hand corner. That's the face of the landfill, active face of the landfill. It is the final resting place for all Polk City's waste coming out of there. The bottom right-hand side is the Environmental Learning Center. We're going to touch on that a little bit here in a future slide. But Metro Waste Authority is more than landfill. It's, we have two landfills, one in Perry, one down at Metro Park East, just east of Southeast Polk. We are about, just shy of two thousand acres down there. Interesting little fact on that one is although we're eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred acres, eight hundred acres of that is farmland, five hundred acres of that being timber, flatlands and prairie, with just five hundred acres of that being landfill area currently today. So most people drive by there, see that huge eighteen hundred acres and think, oh boy, we're in for a lot of garbage. But really, we're doing a lot of environmental stuff down there too. We're going to be adding almost twenty acres of wetlands this year alone to that property on top of the acres that we already have. And then down on that bottom right-hand side being our environment, learning education center, which is two classrooms inside that ranch-style house, used to be a farm, that we've turned into classrooms and very high-tech classrooms we'll discuss here. As well as under Metro Waste Authority, the central and northwest transfer stations, the one on the left-hand side being central downtown Des Moines, out on Dixon on the point. That is the older land, transfer station that Des Moines used to have, which bought, has been managing for some time now. Bottom right-hand side would be the Northwest Transfer Station in Grimes. It's the newest transfer station, newest building built that is ten, ten stalls there. Down on the bottom, you'll see that road come up around, swing back up to the building. That is where the tunnels are, trucks, two semis. There's two tunnels in there, semis go underneath. The garbage trucks are on top. You see a few open doors. They dump inside there and then we push it into the semis, put the covers on top and then it goes out to Metro Park East. That way, saves a lot of trips by garbage trucks out there, time and efficiency, as, as well as environmental issues. We're controlling that. We're also looking at taking some of that stuff up to Metro Park East. On the top left-hand corner of that same picture, you'll see the two white hoop buildings. Those are the salt storage buildings that many of the suburbs participate in for emergency salt for their cases, as well as the city of Des Moines having those as well.
Just out of curiosity, how many truckloads are going out of Grimes a day?
You have four or five on a constant rotation. You probably have twenty-five.
Really?
They're constantly rotating in and out of there on the, on the staggered schedule. And then the bottom left-hand corner, you're seeing just kind of that darker area, that's a grassy area, that road in between private road, Metro Waste built to access that both the southern, southeastern side to get the trucks in. But then that's thirteen acres of undeveloped land. We're looking at a future project with material recovery facility of our own or something else down there. There's some grower tracks there that make it prime for that. Doing the study on that currently. And about on that central, Mayor, it's about the same maybe, is that by about five?
And so just if you're saying twenty-five out, I'm just thinking twenty-five out of Grimes. So how many garbage trucks does that save on the road by, how many garbage trucks can get into a semi truck, I guess?
Five.
Five?
Say four, something, yes, five. Five a truck. What you're seeing is they're back on that route a lot faster as well, back on those routes. The haulers really are enjoying the, the safety. So some of our programs, curbant recycling program, twenty thousand tons. Polk City participates in this program. Twenty thousand tons recycled sixteen seventeen. That's throughout all of our members. That is a lot of recycling. We're seeing that only grow. We're looking at what the efficiencies of that are with our current partner, as well as trying some of our own new programs that I'll touch on here a little bit about cardboard. But it really, it's now about the quality of the recycling, a lot less than the quantity of recycling. Last year, two, ten years, it's been really about quantity. Right now, we're looking at, we really quality on the recycling, especially since some of those markets overseas have, have dried up for us. In this program, we facilitate the RFP process. We manage the contract. We do hopefully most of the problem solving on behalf of the residents and, and the haulers and the city as well. We're hoping to keep those phone calls out of the city hall, down to our offices if we can. If not, we are contacting, in contact with your city hall often, trying to troubleshoot those things as well. We also do the outreach and education for that program. Composting yard waste disposal. If you were here when I was here just a couple of years ago, we talked about this in length, about combing versus continuing on the same process. We all agree that maybe combing, combing lanes are late, meaning that yard waste would go into the garbage can and out to the landfill. Although we can, by law, the board chooses not to, which I think has turned out to be a pretty good decision by that board. Either way, I'd say that right. It is, it was a good decision by that board. We were challenged by the board and the cities, the city members to get that program turned around, which I think the staff, hats off to them, done that very quick way of one year. We've turned that around. We bring in thirty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-eight tons of compost, yard waste every year. And last year, we sold thirty-four thousand cubic yards of compost just last year. So when you divide that up, we're selling just about as much compost as we're bringing in the yard waste now. Turned out around, around a hundred and eighty quickly. And that was some really good outside-the-box thing by the staff. Our new thought pattern is any new program that we're going to tackle or an old program we're going to relaunch, we're doing business plans. So business plan that we take to your banker are the same business plans that we're building inside our offices and kicking them around inside and then also down to the board to let them decide. So we're straight up, if we're going to have some revenue or if we're going to have some loss, board gets to decide if the program. In this one, we're seeing a net positive at this point. So that was great news. Again, on that program, we're facilitating the RFP, managing the contract. Lizzy, but fill me back here because she does office work. I was about to skip over that again because this is a huge piece that we manage at RFP. We manage the contract, the problem solving, the outreach and education. And of course, what we do best, garbage, providing education and customer service for the ninety-one thousand five hundred households throughout the area, including yours. At least the education piece on garbage and also troubleshooting a lot of those questions still. Even though we don't manage your contract, we still do a lot of phone calls to the city don't. So we'd like to know your, your haulers and, and your different rules so that maybe we can keep those phone calls again out of your city hall again. And with that, it's, it's pretty fun to share the number of sixty-three thousand three hundred calls. That's what came down to our office last year along up the field with this program. You divide that up by the cities and that's minus Des Moines, although we get some, quite a few of Des Moines phone calls even though we did not know their program. But that's a lot of phone calls coming out of your city halls. We're hoping to save time and effort from personnel. Another one of our great programs has hazardous waste collection. Fifty-nine Polk County's, Polk City residents were served the sixteen seventeen. The next time we'll present, next year, we'll have that divided up between bond rant and grimes because that's, we've seen the growth in that split. We opened up grimes for hazardous waste collection to your residents just last summer, last fall for that. And so we're seeing a huge growth down there. We finally, as of July, August, got a full-time person down there to now schedule times for residents to come in, drop that product off instead of driving bond brats. So they get their choice still. They can go to either one. But it's really been a huge help for the western suburbs of this.
Is, is grimes by appointment only? Is that?
It is right now.
Okay.
Which the other bond rant is a little more open, but it has appointment as well. We're hoping as we grow that facility, we will have time staff, sure. Because of some of the other programs we're building. Last year was the first time that the board gives that full-time person out there, but they are wearing many hats outside of that, at that location, which is great.
And just out of curiosity, because I have been asked recently, is, is grimes open Monday through Saturday, just Monday through Friday?
It's Monday through Friday and it's, we are one Saturday a month.
Second Saturday of the month.
Okay.
You guys see what I, the actual smart one that goes on the backs to help me out with that.
Thank you.
And then the community impact, which is a fun one. The classroom presentations, community presentations, chamber memberships, special events and the grants. Classroom presentations is something, we have a, I call it full-time educator on board. She again wears many hats, but her first job is to get out there and educate the community as well as the students from K through college. She's out there presenting to. Community presentations, you name it, we'll, we'll present at it, that type of thing. Chamber memberships, I kid around with Jean Meyer and Jay. At Des Moines Chamber, we belong to more chambers than they do. We do believe belonging to all our chamber members, which is twenty-four, I believe it is, chamber membership. So we try to be at least once or twice a year on those. It's a lot to cover the small staff, but we hope to in the future to get even more. So that's great. Special events, several special events. Here's a picture down on the, on the right-hand side of last year's special event in Almond. Little Almond now, yeah, wants some distinguished gentleman out in your crowd here. It's pictured in that as well.
I can't imagine.
Little shorter guy, yeah. Yeah, he made it for that trip. He's threatening that he's going to make the grimes one this year. So I let it out of the box, grimes this year. But Almond came in very close second, I believe, and flourished in per capita. That's Almond. They won last year in both total pounds as well as per capita. So we've asked them what their trick was. They won't, they won't spill beans. It was fun to present to that one.
Ron knows.
Ron knows?
He knows the trick.
You're going to tell him?
Yeah, I know the clerk.
Hang on. Is this being recorded?
Yes, it is.
Oh, now you're not going to tell? Stop recording.
No, they go door to door and all of their bags don't come from.
Yeah, well, that was kind of fun last year. And we knew that because the media figured out so advanced, saying that Almond was leaving there, is in charge. A great part of that story, that's their first park bench in entire city. So once that caught the news, folks were shipping their bags up there for them to win, which is fine. It was part of that competition between the cities. The grimes swore they were going to win this year and they did very well.
Did you collect more pounds total this year than you did last year then?
Just about doubled it.
Really? Wow, that's awesome.
It is good. And if you go out to landfill, you think we didn't even touch it, but we doubled it, which is a great thing. And so obviously it's worth continuing. Next year as well, it's a fun, good competition between the cities and they really play each other, especially at the border, such a playing each other against them. So we're doing again, two thousand and ten plastic bags collected to be recycled to that park bench. We then have a, a good relationship with the company that makes those benches and they're very kind to us, I think, by buying those. We bale them down at our facility. They square bales like hay and we sell them to them. And then they just give us credit and it doesn't take care of the whole mill. They give us credit, use those bags to recycle. So it's, it's a great store. The grants, the grants are the fun part as well. Fifty thousand dollars in grants. Sorry, it's messed up here, but fifty thousand dollars in grants we're giving out every year. We changed the program just last year. We are now giving two ten thousand dollar grants or I believe they were five hundred dollar grants, four or five of those. We decided that two ten thousand dollar competitive grants would be a little bit more competitive, right, to come after that ten grand, a little more meaningful inside the cities. And we're really seeing that come out, some great programs, great applications coming. But we still have thirty thousand left in one thousand dollar grants. We're really encouraging our city partners, those twenty-four partners of ours, to come out first. And we want to give you those thousand dollar grants first. It's one per city. But still, we've done a lot of fun projects with different cities with that thousand dollars. So if you have any ideas, this is the part my staff hates because tomorrow they get ten phone calls about all these crazy ideas and they say, what are you telling them? But I say, if you can think of it and how it attaches or helps environmentally, pitch it. And we'll actually help you walk through the grant writing process, get creative with you and see what we can do here. All we're looking for is a little bit of, or noriety or a plaque or something about metro waste and, and that's it. And then that to be big and then your parks or whatever you need to do compost. We've done garbage, recycling, plastic garbage cans instead of some of ones that are the small town, have parks so they blow away. We get the heavy ones for you. So those are fun ones. So again, there's a thousand dollars sitting out there and a ten thousand dollar grant if you could, if you could write a, a good enough one. Any questions on the grants? In Leslie's department would be in charge of those grants. You can get ahold of her and she'll give to you the right person or again, that educator person, Jenny, one that covers those grants. So some of the forecasts, continually serving the city of Polk City and the region in new ways. We're again, the leader innovator facilitator, small business recycling as, as the leader. Construction demolition recycling, the innovator and the regional roundtables facilitator. Small business recycling has been a fun one. We started this about a year ago with small businesses in homes. They're talking to us about there's not enough room for their cart. And they're getting more and more cardboard, both the business side and the residential side. What can we do with that? So we started a program with small businesses where we started a pilot program collecting. I think we started with four small businesses. We found that it was more than what our vehicles down at central office could pick up and put in the trunk very quickly. To getting the board to approve a very large baler, we had a small baler, twice sized to this podium, baling for us, to now horizontal baler doing twelve hundred pound bales. And we sold the board on it, and Robert should probably close his ears on this one, but we sold the board on it by saying that we'd like to scalp out of the transfer stations there. Cardboard that was in the garbage, got a lot of, since we've launched this program, we haven't touched the garbage. We have so much clean cardboard and we've never even gone to the, to the, to the way we sold the board by that piece of equipment. We'll get there once we get some more full-time guys. But again, we've now collected two hundred and ninety thousand pound cardboard at this facility in Grimes. We're baling it into twelve hundred pound bales and we're successfully now selling a lot of markets. It's a revenue stream place. Eventually, yes, we will get the scalp and the garbage stream once we get some more personnel out there. But it's been a great program for us to learn the whole recycling side. And the regional roundtables, you name it, we'll do the roundtable. We'll facilitate it. We'll get players in. We'll get the cities together. We've got, we've been, or we're going to be doing tree canopy this summer, food waste this summer, storm debris. We have done Polk County versus human management, the city managers have worked. They've asked for that one to be revisited. So we'll do that one. We facilitated meetings between the different sites of Bottletown about four times this year for legislation. We don't have site on it, but get two sites together, find the first time down at our office, they sat down at the same table. Do have a vested interest in whatever way it goes, just to know which way it's headed. So we'll facilitate whatever you can, you want to think about here at the city that you need to, the other city players or, you know, we've had come and go hypey, Ryan Group Grant Construction, all of them come in for construction demolition recycling, facilitate, as well. So if you need help on that, let us know. We'll certainly put that together for you. So that, I know I went through very quickly with you and kind of who we were and where we're headed. Any other questions?
I know that Polk City is a little unique in our, especially when it comes to the storm debris or just debris on a general daily basis with the brush pile that we have. But I know that Metro Waste helped us with the covered bins that we've got out there a couple years ago when we were having issues with cardboard getting out of control and just, again, ours is a minor in compared to the two hundred and ninety thousand pounds you're talking about. But I, it's amazing anytime I go out there, how full those dumpsters are of cardboard. And Mike, you're out there daily. I mean, it's amazing how much that recycle center that we have through partnership with you guys gets used.
That's something we're happy to continue to help with. We are looking at placing cardboard bins, all the city members inside their city limits, as well as glass bins, same type of garbage bin inside the cities. We're looking at building that over the next year. If we can keep that glass out of the recycling facility, it really helps us with the damp agent. So we're looking at doing a voluntary program rather than a ban of glass. As you guys put it, recycling is now, we hope to continue that future. But right now, if we can get it to the side, it helps us a lot. We have a partnership with the company out of Kansas City picks it up, low cost from Austin Grimes, I believe it's going to be Grimes. And then take it down to Kansas City and make insulation. So it's a, it's a big deal. Once it gets crushed and mixed in with fiber paper, it's cardboard, it really makes that cardboard worthless where it's anywhere right now from ninety pound, ninety dollars a ton to we've sold bales, a truckload of bales at semi. So really, we need to keep that glass out. So we can help in that and he would be willing to partner with that future that as well.
Got a good statement there.
You need to get rid of some of that cardboard. Bring it, or have a caller bring it over to the Grimes location there. It's a lot easier for them and people.
So, so if you were to give a pitch, since it is being recorded, to any residents, whether it's on the garbage side or the recycle side, what would it be?
You'd probably go onto the recycling side of quality over quantity. So a lot of residents are really excited and enthusiastic about recycling. And sometimes maybe are trying a little bit too hard on the recycling, a bowling ball, or a car seat, or a garden hose, or something like that. Call us if they doubt, call our office.
Interesting, okay. Bowling ball, huh?
We can bowling balls every day.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm MWA downgraded probably significantly with their city representation this year after Dan went off and they got stuck with me. But I'm trying to get up to speed, and I was able to have a conversation actually last week with Leslie. And sort of bigger picture on waste, I think we're pretty competitive with what we offer to the citizens. It may be a little bit over competitive on what we charge them. We talked about a few options, and again, I don't wanna, I think the facility we have for yard waste is awesome. Garbage Day and large appliance collection that we have annually is a service. I do think that both recycling and garbage should be something that the residents pay for. So there's some options, and I know it's been tackled in the past, and I know it was fraught with some contentious discussion. So maybe I'm wading in the waters here that it shouldn't be, but if there's a way to maybe lessen some of the trucks going through town and get through more of a pass-through position of what we pay for, or don't pay for, as opposed to what gets charged. Very impressed with the group, and like I said, trying to get up speeds home is as valuable as Dan was with me being the representative to the group.
So you've been a great addition. Your staff and Public Works has been a great work. Again, if we can ever help you, whether it be a storm or something, we have the grinders and all that. We certainly offer to bring that out to give emergencies, no record. So whatever resource we, we, in the pocket about this, sit down, if something's gonna kick around, just put the numbers down in front of you, bias, don't make any. If we run your RFP, you don't run your RFP, or run your garbage recycling, so certainly we wanna be a resource.
Well, since these two are on the front line, I would ask, do you have anything, either one of you guys?
Like I said, when, when we discussed the problem, they were taken care of, and it's been a good couple of years here out there at the recycling area. So it's been good work with you guys.
Complaints from the citizens going down, considerable.
So we like to hear. So Leslie will keep working with you, keep looking for that reduction.
We like that.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, thanks, guys, appreciate it. Item four, Davis Street reconstruction project. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-one, change order number two, in the amount of one thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Joint thrust restraint, cloud of sequence hydrant removed. Who's getting his feet?
I can't remember. I, I don't know a heck of a lot about it, other than there was a hydrant that needed to be relocated or moved in. There was no thrust blocks or auxiliary valve there, so they installed the joint restraint.
Yeah, that's correct. And the only other thing I would like to add is that that number was much higher in the beginning. And Laura Lambert with Snyder Associates really negotiated that down, so that's what I gotta say. Les with either of the two resolutions on here, but just an overall update on, on how the corner we are relatively on pace. Tell me again, I know you have four, but one more should be done.
Yeah, I don't know the numbers exactly, but of course, we just come off a week, so you can pretty much say.
Bad time to ask.
Yeah.
We were rain delay already. But as far as their proceeding and they, you know, and the number of days they have to put in the water main, it's going, it's going well.
The guy I saw walking through there today was about ankle deep, or knee deep, I think, when I was walking through the field. My goodness, it's bad.
Do you wanna talk about the tie-in, search possible, one lane traffic? Because I know it was set for today, but now with the rains that we've had in the last couple of months.
Now, or you want me to wait till the end?
Might as well, since we're talking about, because it does fit into this.
Yeah. There was supposed to be a water main tie-in on Third Street in the intersection, and they are going to have flaggers available because it's going to be out in the roadway. It won't close down the whole lane, but it's gonna be bad enough that we have to put it down to one lane. So flaggers will be there. It will probably be approximately six-hour job. And that was supposed to be today, and of course, with the rain, now they're looking at Wednesday. And they put out new flyers to the residents that there will be a water shutdown on that day. On the, pretty much confined to Davis and Third right there at that intersection, so, and the rest of it, so. Anyway, you will see some delays on Wednesday when that is going on. They will be right out there in that intersection on Third Street, and flaggers will be there. So it'll probably be a pretty rough day for traffic through that area.
How are they?
Yeah, we don't, we try to, we tell them that until after eight or eight-thirty, do not be on that roadway, so they do know that.
Need a motion on A, please. Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-two, approving partial pay application number one, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars eighty-one cents. Roll call, please.
Ogle, yes, Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Motion carries.
Sorry, Mike, real quick, what's our target date on, on Legion? In that summer?
August.
Okay.
I think at the end of August. I know it's the end of August, because we were talking about seeding and stuff like that, so.
At this rate with the rain.
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't. Ron's taking.
That's true. Item five, consider motion to approve second reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen five hundred fireworks zoning ordinance.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen six hundred, amending chapter ninety-nine sewer service charges by adding sewer surcharge for Rock Creek Santerio sewer connection.
So move.
Back in.
So, real quick for the vote, I am not going to be consistent with my vote here. I do appreciate Gary educating me on some of the criteria here. It is what it is. Progress over fraction probably is best described as we're getting there. But having voted for, voted against the first reading, and a vote for the second, and plan to for the third. Make a note of that.
Roll call, please.
Ogle, yes, Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, Mayor's Proclamations. Item one, National EMS Week, May twentieth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Let's read the end. Now therefore, Jason Morse, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, in recognition of this event, do hereby claim week of May twentieth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. It's Emergency Medical Services Week, celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our community. Please join me in thanking them for their dedicated service. Item two, National Public Works. Really? You guys get a week too? All right. May twentieth through the same week even, as the EMS workers. All right.
Going through a token.
Just one. All right, so National Public Works Week. Now therefore, I, Jason Morse, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the week of May twentieth through twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, as National Public Works Week in Polk City, Iowa. And ask residents to join us in thanking those who keep us connected by maintaining our roadways and water systems. Thanks.
Asking why you're red, EMS perks. Good point, thank you.
Is that a tear?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little red, too.
Oh, yeah. Never had a week before. Maybe a day. That's getting good, Jenny. All right, item eight, reports. I got a couple of quick things. So I went to the PCC EDC Annual Meeting for their, basically it was the Business Person of the Year, Citizen Person of the Year. I know Andy were there as well, and nice turnout. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a couple of quick comments. Fortunately, I got there late, rested them there on time, and had to hide out in the bathroom during a tornado warning. So I was purposely late, that worked out well in mine. Anyway, but specifically, congratulations to Sean Comer of Papa's Pizza for winning Business of the Year, very well deserved. Jason Suzanne and Noah Willie for Citizen slash Family of the Year. This is the first time I went to a full family, and both very, very, very deserving people, and they were, they both had really nice comments to say. And obviously, really appreciative to everything, and it was really cool to be there. Let's see, what else? I went to Legion meeting here a couple of weeks ago, and I had a great, let's just say lively conversation around things going on around Polk City, including some signs. Appreciated the opportunity to speak to them, and we, although we may disagree on some things, I did appreciate the opportunity to speak to them. And I hope they will have me back sometime again soon. I'd like to thank Public Works for on that deal, for getting, because it was actually that day, I guess, had the sign placed, the relocated North Polk sign out at the Ball Field. Looks really nice, and thank you guys for taking the time to get that done. It's in a much more visible location than on the north side of town, and have had some compliments too as well. Do, do appreciate, do appreciate that. I think Councilman Walters will get into the signs a little bit more when he speaks regarding the meeting that we had before, and.
He will now.
He is now. At least that's what we talked about earlier, so I took that off my list. But most importantly, we've had a couple crazy weeks around here, to say the least. And I want to personally, on record, thank staff for doing such a great job. Specifically, those of you at the front line answering the calls, taking the heat down by the residents. Some of us feel that some of the same thing, but you guys took heat, and quite honestly, took some calls that were probably a little uncalled for. And I, I personally wanna thank you guys for your hard work, and what you guys did to handle the situation. And to that end, also thank the developer and all those involved for the work they did. It's been a lot of work to get here, but I, as I said to several people, as it was going on, from fire to police to Public Works, to front office staff, to administration, developer, their subs. Everybody stepped up, you know, I think first phone call came in at seven o'clock, six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, and by, you know, eight, seven-thirty, they were down there working. So I just, again, thank you guys personally for all your hard work and dedication, making a, what was potentially a really bad situation, a whole lot better. So that's all I have. Jeff, you wanna talk about the Corps?
Sure, I actually have a few things to talk about.
Thanks.
First one, do you have any more Adventure Pass openings at the library?
Oh, lots of them.
I would highly encourage anyone to go sign up for the library, Adventure Pass. I not want to take all of them. My wife and my children would love to go to Living History Farm every weekend of the year, but we have to share. It's a great program. Get the zoo, botanical center, science center, and Living History Farm. All free of charge for your family, so. Great program. I'm glad the library invested in it. I know my kids loved it yesterday at Living History Farms, so.
I think Laura signed up, so.
Good, good. Yep, it's a good thing. On May fourth, several staff members, Mayor Morse, Councilman Sarchet, and I have visited the US Army Corps of Engineers Sailorville Project Office to discuss a multitude of items. The four real big resonating items that came about in no particular order. The dams, both diversion and barrier dam, we're seeing a lot of action out there. At the barrier dam, they'll be installing new pumps, which is going to be a great future asset for Polk City, because there's massive flooding, so it's a safe. And at the diversion dam here at Big Creek, they are going to end their construction activities here in October. So the crane's gonna go goodbye, after four years.
How's it gonna be done?
It's gonna quit.
What was that?
It's been longer than that, remember, it's two terms, sir.
Well, yeah. The other, the other interesting item on about was the Corps made common about resourcing that roadway and trail, which is going desperately needed, so.
Clears through the whole park.
Yeah, well, the roadway, and then, yeah, they wanna make some significant headway on the trail. That's, that's great news. A particular interest to the community, the Corps has a project that falls in line with our purification project, Long Bridge Road. They're going to remove a lot of those dead pine trees here later this year on the south side of the road between Bridge and Trail. And on the north side of the road, on the southeast side, southeast of the sports complex, they are looking to remove some of the vegetation that's unwanted or is aggressively growing through there. And it's an opportunity maybe for us to team up with them for some purification between the sports complex, the residential development there, and Bridge Road. So that'll be a nice future goal. The sports complex is probably one of the biggest discussions, the topic we had out there. The long and short of it is, the Corps is frustrated with some of the activities that are, the Sailorville project is frustrated, as are we, with some of the efforts that go about out there with putting shovel in the ground. Anytime that we dig a hole for a tree, run electric pole, just about anything, we need a litany of approvals. I say that with some sincerity. It's become silly, and it's, it has not been like that before. It's come down to an issue with the real estate department and just trying to get things realigned out Rock Island. And then we have the sign put up, so. Well, how we got that one through?
Did.
So the sign looks, is out on the sports complex property, and it's great. That's all I had for signs.
Advertising.
Oh, and advertising, they're still advertising out there.
And, no, particularly on their properties as far as they're, and we're working through those, getting that letter on advertising on federal ground.
Oh, yeah, the, the advertising on federal ground is a no-no, so we're gonna get that figured out for, for future advertising. We'll get that figured out down the road. So the, the follow-up to Sailorville, Rob and I took a trip out to DC last week, part of the going partnership. It was a very productive and fruitful trip. A particular interest, Rob and I met with Army Corps of Engineers Headquarters. Talked to a number of staff members out there. We voiced praises with the Sailorville Project staff. We also voiced some praise with the Rock Island District staff. They've been helpful with us over many, many years. We also discussed some points of frustration, particularly the sports complex, and the issues arising with what we can, can't do out there without any kind of approval. They gave us some helpful tips, but I think we still have some work cut out for us to clear some red tape so we can get things done out there quicker. Amy, we're still trying to figure out some of our, some of our adhesionment language. Here may not get done in the air. They don't care, so we don't care, I guess. Not really, not really a way I wanna do business with them or with anyone else, but our hands are really tied, and so. If the ball is in their court.
If I can make one comment to the Corps meeting that we had out here, was, it was two hours of one of the most productive meetings I've heard in recent memory, with any, honestly. any, honestly, so thank you to them, taking the time to meet with us, and I know we all walk away from there going, did that just happen, so.
And finally, thank you to staff for the last couple of weeks for taking calls over some pretty crazy events that happened out there. A lot of the comments that came through, I think, were aloof, but we got through it, so. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, just on the sign deal, I've gotten a email, and it looks like I was the only one that got it, about the Methodist Church signs, why they came down, where they went, and who's.
I talked to you.
And I was puzzled, cause I didn't even know there were Methodist Church signs, but I had no answers.
I filled it one from Ron Cook, and he's the one that came, from, from the United Methodist Church.
Yeah, yeah.
I explained it to him, and he had a few comments, and we moved on, and he come and got the sign, so that's the last I'd heard of it.
Oh, good, that's, the gist of my email was, where are they?
Yeah, take care. I'll come back to you. Okay.
You know, not a lot more than what Jeff said on the core meetings. Just to be more specific, so they talked about the trees, which would be on the southeast side, yes, of, you're right, of, of Bridge, but they also alluded to some work on the northwest side of the road, in between kind of the corner lot there on Bridge and Parker and the sports complex, and wanted to clean, I don't know if you mentioned that or not, but I had asked them to be clear with the residents, so we're in Ridgeview, since that is right next to a lot of those houses, and when they're, and I don't know, I think they sent this call for that.
Can't do it before October.
Okay.
They didn't have a specific time frame.
When they do it, just to try to be proactive, and whether that's through us or not, and what they're trying to do, and so we don't feel some of the calls, and that's a different thing. And I think the sentiment, if we agree with sort of the characterization earlier, you know, they are our neighbors, and might as well be good neighbors, and I think a lot of the conversation was productive around, so. The other items on the DC trip, it was interesting to shed a little bit more light on the, what I'll call the dour adding of the Texture Four bill, that included the decoupling of the Loflaftail stacks boat, and the boys already sort of announced their plans to come back with that as soon as they possibly can, which would be smart, so I mean, kind of run it through the same sort of scenario that we did this year, which is what it is, and like we all sort of mentioned, to kind of maybe hope that would be a little bit more time to prepare for the next time around, knowing that the next time around is coming sooner rather than later, but I think we're working as best we can, given the timeframe that we have, to be in hopefully a little bit better spot next March.
I will echo the comments about the Chamber and Economic Development. It's great to see some of the small businesses here in town. It's hard enough to run a small business, let alone to give back to the community, so I think the winners were very deserving. They not only have a business here in town that they work pretty hard to maintain, but they go above and beyond and give back to the community, so just wanted to thank them for that, and glad they were recognized. I also wanted to mention, I don't know if everybody was aware, there was a K-9 fundraiser lemonade stand that happened in my neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, and the reason it came about was some neighborhood kids had a lemonade stand, and their first customer was a police officer. They thought, well, that's really cool, we're gonna raise money for this K-9 that they have, and then they raised over a thousand dollars, kids with a lemonade stand, and neighborhood kids, my daughter was mad she had to go to soccer, cause she wanted to be a part of it. Trey stopped by, multiple police officers came by, community members that I know didn't live in our neighborhood came by, so that was a really cool, just, you know, small thing that started because one of our police officers stopped by to give the kids a quarter for lemonade, and then see my daughter who cannot get enough LOL dolls, and she was getting a little bit, you know, obsessed with me, 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 and that morning, she made breakfast for us all, Pop-Tarts, and then she wanted tips, so then she could give it to the police officer fundraiser. She encouraged me to write a check for $200,000 million, which, but maybe not quite that much, but I know, I know.
That's a fancy dog.
I know, so, you know, to see those kids get so excited, and just such a connection, you know, from, except the officers to community members, all the down to the kids, and that was really, um, messy.
Are you gonna talk about the K-9? And I'll ask questions after that, you know. I just also wanted to, you know, the resiliency of Public Works, the subcontractors, the developer of the instance, incredible amount of water that made its way down to Reno Cove, it was, felt like it was taken care of very quickly, right to some people, but certainly I saw it once, and then three hours, four hours later, and it looked significantly better, so, you know, it's just one of those things that happens, kind of a bad, perfect storm, I guess if you will, based on progress of the ground and water, and I was gonna talk about the K-9, and I'm gonna let you talk about it, and then just ask a question.
I'll throw to you.
I don't have anything here. Just real quick, one thing that, not to take away from the generalized staff, kudos that were given, but I do think that Dan Govins probably needs some recognition, who was coming back after a call, had nothing to do with anything, saw the problem with the storm, doors stopped, luckily he was in his bunker gear, and I saw his bunker gear afterwards, and it took a beating, but went to, I think, waste deep water and unplugged the first drain, and I think the second and third as well, so I don't know if there's any precedent for the developer to pay him, but he's paid a lot of money, so in the, sort of, this guy anyway, they owe him, but just, that's emblematic of how he works, and just, again, not something that PD does it as well, but.
Our officer spoke up and said that was, I won't say what he said, but it was basically the coolest things he'd seen, he just waited in there and started clearing the drains out, and that torrent of water, he said it dropped from thigh waist high to ankle depth within a couple of minutes, so those drains get cleared. I just wanna touch on the K-9 fundraising, and just give thanks to everybody that's been involved with it, especially a few members of my staff and our spouses. The fundraising has gone much, much better than even I anticipated, starting with an event with Sean Comer, host over at Papa's, where the PD showed up en masse to support us, and Sean himself gave 10% of his gross take for the night, and then he personally matched it at the end of the night. To this point, the lemonade stands, all the local businesses have donated, I think, almost 100% have donated something for a fundraising gala, which is Friday night, for silent auction and live auction events, and in particular, I just recognize my wife and Matt Iker's wife have done a ton of work on collecting things for the gala, and so everybody's came together so far. We've raised enough money to pay off the dog already, and now we're moving into territory of buying vehicle equipment, and we haven't even had the gala yet, so I anticipate that bringing in a good chunk of money, and we have a couple of other fundraising events. We're gonna work with some other local businesses over the summer prior to the time, and then also Officer Iker was selected as the handler, went through, he's worked the hardest on it, went through an objective hiring process, we're actually brought in K-9 experts from other venture agencies to conduct the oral board interviews, so we had other eyes on things to make sure we had, we showed them the process, we showed them our policy, went through everything with them, and to make sure that we were doing things and setting the proper standards and doing things the right way, and they all heard with the way that we had moved through this so far, so I'm very excited to see how the fundraising continues, but it's gone, gone very well. So we've raised, including the association's initial $5,000 donation, the other, the rest of the $14,000 at this point. We saw a few grants out there outstanding as well, so it's gone very well. Thank you everybody that has participated, that loved the, loved the agency, it was awesome. I spent probably an hour up there, I took my dog up there, cause he's actually the same dad as the dog, we're gonna be getting, let all the kids play with him and see him, and so it was a lot of fun, great to see everybody turn out. It was just constant blow of cars the whole time I was there, coming to check that out.
Actually, my question was gonna be, the amount raised, cause I know, you know, so it's been 14,000?
Yeah, a little, a little more. It's, so we've sold all tickets for the gala, so we've actually raised a lot more than that, we have to pay for the gala out of that as well, so that'll, that'll drop that number down some, but even the anticipated net considerably will put us probably around a thousand dollars, and now over the cost of the dog, we still have links to the gala, but we'll bring in from the silent auction, live auction events there as well.
Congrats to Matt.
Yeah, he's worked voluntarily, I mean, Dave can speak to it, Lindsay, he's been to every committee meeting, he has donated, I would estimate probably 100, 120 hours of his own time, and knowing that he wasn't guaranteed the position, there's still, he had to do a physical agility test, but I did myself to prove to them that it wasn't impossible to do, about killed me, but, and then our new officer went through the process as well, knowing that he, he had just started and he wasn't eligible, but he would like to be the next K-9, so he's gonna be kind of like an understudy, so he went through the process as well, so Matt, Matt's done a phenomenal job, and she got the whole process and worked very hard with it.
Very passionate.
It's good to see the dedication going in, cause you know it's gonna last, so, excited about it.
Anything else? Library? All right, I need a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, mark calendars, Tuesday, May 29th, 2018. All in favor? Tuesday, that's gonna be.